So, as you may know, I'm here to talk about why we use the racial equity lens. And I believe what Simon Sinek believes, that you should always start with why. So I'm gonna run down a list of laws, policies, and procedures that have occurred in American history that have helped shape the America we currently live in. And they all have one thing in common. We start in 1787 with the Constitutional Convention. We find Article One, Section Two, and Article One, Section Nine of the Constitution. You don't have this slide yet, this suggests me orienting you to what we're gonna talk about. The second thing I want to bring to your attention is the Dred Scott case that occurred in 1857. Plessy versus Ferguson in 1896, the National Housing Act in 1934, and the Wagner Act of 1935, and the most important one, the G.I. Bill, or the Servicemen's Readjustment Act of 1944. Two things I would note. Number one, this is a sequential order of events. And the one thing they all have in common is each one of these things I just read to you were based explicitly and explicitly on race. Article One, Section Two dealt with the three-fifth clause, said that all slaves will be counted as three-fifths of a person. Article One, Section Nine explicitly talked about the slave trade. The Dred Scott case basically said, and this is not me, but the judge, "The Negro has no rights that the white man is bound to respect." 1896 created separate but equal. 1934, the National Housing Act created redlining. The Wagner Act created union wages. Unions were restricted by race, basically into the 64 Civil Rights Act. And last but not least, my favorite, the G.I. Bill, which I took advantage of, and it did a great job of getting me in the middle class. That was not true for my Uncle Fred, who served in World War II, and other black soldiers who served with him. It created a white middle class while creating inequity across America. So what can we do about it? Well, the first thing I would like to say to this crowd is we, that's you and I collectively, are not responsible for any of those things I just read to you. You're not old enough to have been around, so you're not responsible. So that is not your job to fix that. What I'm asking you to do as we move forward is ask yourself, what can we do? And the one thing that we can do is to start looking at the policies, procedures, and common practices that we are creating moving forward within equity lens. Can you do me a favor and go to the next slide? Next slide, please. And so the key thing here, when we talk about the equity lens, is what is our vision? If you take a look at your computers, I think you have a copy of this document. And for those of you in the audience, we're looking at the EDI vision. We're looking at a culture that values, respects, and listens to all residents. Policies that minimize harm to communities that are already overburdened. But most importantly, what we're asking about is leaders who intentionally promote equity, diversity, and inclusion. So what are our goals? Our goals are the same goals that are given to us by GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. What do they say? That we should normalize. And what they're saying is, we should normalize conversations about race. Again, we're not responsible for the things that occurred in centuries or decades that we were not around. But what are we doing now that we have the gavel? Organizing. This refers to a sustainable and supporting structure. Organizing involves putting in place the right resources and people. A good example of that point is, if we're going to create a new office, a new policy or procedure, are we also creating the personnel and the budget to support it? Operationalize. Leaders should consider how policies, plans, and decisions affect residents and employees using a racial equity lens when you are making budget, resource, policy, and procedure decisions. Last but not least is assess. This refers to evaluating and measuring how our people and systems are evolving to see where we are and what may need to change. Again, imagine if we all did that over the decades that I mentioned earlier, and if everybody did their little piece to assess where we are in this moment in time. How different would the inequities be in our nation? Next slide, please. One more slide, please. You should say six steps to the equity lens. This is the most important piece, and this is why I was invited here this morning to talk about the equity lens. And so as I talked to the several directors of our various departments, this is the number one thing I asked them to focus on, the six steps to the equity lens. Number one, I'm asking them to establish goals for their proposals. What are you trying to achieve with this? What problem are you trying to solve when you create a new policy, procedure, or common practice? Second thing I asked them to consider is, what data were you using when you created that policy, procedure, or common practice? Is it data from a previous administration? Data you received from the communities? And speaking of communities, that brings us to step number three. Did you sit down with internal and external stakeholders to discuss the data and the proposals? A good example is, oftentimes, you will find people behind me who've shown up expressly to complain about something. Most of the time, they're complaining because nobody reached out to them in the beginning to find out how would this policy, procedure, or practice impact their lives. And when they find out about it through the news or their community leaders, you will find them showing up complaining about whatever it is you had proposed here. Now, step number four, you posed this question, and if you remember, no other step, this is the most important step. Ask this question, who will benefit and who will be burdened by this policy, procedure, or common practice? Step number five is about implementation. Again, once you looked at who will be benefiting and who will be burdened, did you come up with a mitigation plan? And if so, are we budgeting for that? And last but not least, leaders will establish key performance indicators, or KPIs, and you will communicate those to both internal and external stakeholders. In other words, your staff should know how well we're doing with this policy, if you're a department, that is, how well we're doing with this policy in terms of who is benefiting and who is being burdened, and are we mitigating any things that cause problems. So with that, I would turn this over to any questions the council may have of myself or Asha.
So, Asha, are you in the department as well?
I am in the department.
Why, what's your role?
So I'm the Equal Opportunity and Human Relations Officer for the county. Pete and I were the first staff for this new Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Office, so we worked together to develop and build the office. Pete primarily focuses on our equity initiatives, and I deal with what's traditionally known as our civil rights issues in the county. So I deal with EEO, fair housing, all of those sorts of issues. But we collaborate on a lot of the work of the office. You're welcome.
So, this is for, the presentation says this is for all the department heads. Has everyone been briefed on this? Do you feel that all departments are moving forward using the equity lens?
So they all have been briefed at cabinet-level in terms of individual briefings. I've gotten through 50%. I think there's about 30. I've personally sat down one-on-one with 15 of them to date.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting this morning. I would like to be a better partner with your office if you have the capacity, like, and I don't mean, of course, you have the capacity, but knowing that there's only two of you to look at legislation going forward in that lens that you mentioned. Is that something that you have the, you know, the time and your schedules with the small number in your department that you'd be willing to do or able to do?
So, Councilwoman, the answer is absolutely not, which is why, when I have those conversations one-on-one with the department heads, what we're doing is trying to embed the equity lens at the department level. So Asha and I serve as oversight and subject matter experts, but we want the department heads to take ownership of the equity lens process.
Okay.
For that reason, by the way.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I would just add that the administration does ask Pete and I to look at bills as they come to us. We collaborate with Pete Barron, and we do provide input from an equity perspective.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Well, I certainly appreciate the discussion and the efforts by the administration to at least, you know, have this lens looked through. You know, obviously, coming from a community of color, you know, my whole life was about, you know, trying to, you know, get an opportunity. And so for those that are in the audience and to the department heads, thank you all for sort of absorbing the data and the information that's coming from the brief and the other conversations you've had over the years. We've come a long way. I mean, even today, there's a person of color sitting in this seat right here. And so that is certainly progress. And while sometimes the topic of color is difficult to talk about, you know, most people, when they hear it, they get the little tingling sensations like, oh, here we go again, right? It really is. But the reality is, there are people like me, and Asha, and the other Pete at the table, who have benefited from years of people having difficult conversations. And so, thank you all for supporting that effort and, you know, allowing us to be the best version of ourselves through, you know, economic policies and legislations and things like that, that have certainly opened the door for people like me. And so, thank you all for the opportunity to present.
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing us to present.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll go to bill number 623. Let me switch back over here to my...
So, you know, we've discussed this bill a lot, and actually, I think the, probably the biggest piece of discussion that we'll have today involves a suggestion on a possible amendment for Mr. Volkey, and then another conversation that Ms. Pickard and I had over email that we'd like to share with the whole group, just to see if this is something that might necessitate an amendment. So, Mr. Volkey, do you want to go ahead and discuss your amendment?
Sure, I will, yep. I just want to thank the sponsor. Excuse me, I reached out to her about a potential amendment for this bill, and instead of waiting until the meeting to put in that amendment and then kind of having the discussion there, we settled on the idea of, let's put this on the work session agenda, and maybe we can talk this through and get some response from the departments. So a number of people reached out to me with a question regarding how the square footage would be calculated in this bill, specifically the 800 square feet. And one of the suggestions that was made is that that be a habitable square footage requirement. So the concept of, you know, we're not thinking unfinished basements, we're thinking habitable living space. I had a chance to talk with the sponsor, and I'm candidly, I don't really care which way it goes. I just think we need to define it, because I think we need to make clear, is it habitable or is it total square footage, just so that anybody coming behind us is clear on what the actual bill means. So with that, the draft amendment that I have that's up on the screen would define this as habitable living space, but I'm very open if the sponsor would prefer to define it as total square footage. I think the question just becomes, what is the intent of this body, so that we're not leaving that up to the departments to then interpret and have to guess what we meant by it. So even if we don't do the amendment, just having this discussion, I think, puts it into the legislative record such that anyone looking later would know this is what the council intended. So with that, I'm happy to either hear from the department, or if the sponsor wants to speak to her intent, I just think it's a worthwhile conversation for us to have.
Thank you to the sponsor and to the maker of the amendment. I had a conversation with the sponsor about this yesterday. First, let me introduce who's sitting at the table. We have Ms. Miller from OPZ, Ms. O'Keefe from IMP, and Ms. Kenny from Law. We had a short discussion internally about this. Understand what you're trying to accomplish here. Our struggle is, I think we can easily calculate square footage, right? Here's the square footage, divide, it's 800 or less, or it's 800 or more. When we get into the term habitable, we're opening it up to debate. And we don't have a clear line, and I'll let the professionals speak to it in a second, but our takeaway from it was, it'll be difficult, and at a layer of potential conflict, and back and forth, and possibly make this a little harder to enforce and apply, which I know is not your intent. So I'll, if Ms. Miller or Ms. Kenny want to expand on it, or if I actually described it correctly, feel free to say so.
I was gonna say, Madam, since it was your bill, go ahead and...
No, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate the attempt to like, the focus on making sure things are clear. And after, you know, talking about it, it actually maybe does unintentionally the opposite, because habitable is apparently, is possibly more easier to debate than square footage itself. So I actually really do appreciate the fact that you are paying that much attention to the details of the bill.
Yeah.
And so was the resolution also to cap the ADU at 800 as well? Just to make sure, because I know the language...
Well, so the ADU would still be capped at the 800.
Okay, good, good.
It would just be, how do you calculate the square footage?
That goes into that equation.
With respect to, is it the lesser of half the square footage, or is it 800? How do you calculate that? So the question is, what is the basis that you're using for the square footage? It sounds like what the council is saying as a body is total square footage. That's what we're looking at. Is that fair? I just want to make sure that's on the record, so that if anybody comes back later and goes, I have unfinished basement space, I have this, I have that, my total square footage is X, there's not some question of, well, did the council mean that to include that space or not? That's what I'm just trying to clarify for the record. Whichever way it goes doesn't really matter to me. It's less of a, it has to be this, and more of a, let's make it clear so nobody's asking questions later, and the department's not put in the position of having to guess.
Our takeaway, just for the record, is total square footage.
Got it, okay. And I think that's the intent of the sponsor. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, another question that arose over the past few weeks over the discussion of this bill is the situation where someone perhaps already had some sort of accessory, not dwelling, but an accessory structure on their property, and how, you know, they want, that structure already exists. In fact, why don't, I can, is it okay if I just use the example, you know, directly the example that we got from the constituent? So the constituent has a property where they, you know, there was an existing home, and that was the home on the property for a long time. They left that home standing and built a new home. So now the original home, which was much smaller than the new home they built, I guess they're interested in turning that into an accessory dwelling unit. But it exceeds the square footage of, it exceeds 800 square feet. So we're kind of looking at, how would a situation like that be treated under the existing law? And is that something that we need to, you know, account for in the statute, or the, you know, the bill going forward?
Yeah, if I could add, the structure is, had been like an architectural office, so it's not actually a dwelling. So they got stopped in the permitting process when they went to convert it to a little cottage for their parents, an ADU, because they didn't, they couldn't put in a little kitchen, they, because we currently don't allow ADUs. So this bill, the concern is, it's probably a little bit above 800 square feet, it's probably closer to 900 square feet, which could be something that could be a modification or a variance request. But we also, he's not sure it meets the setback requirements of the bill either. The structure is currently there, it's not something that he has built. So that, when we pass the no, the prohibition for variances about setbacks, this is the exact kind of situation that, they have a structure, it exists there, it's been there a long, long time. And their dream of turning it into an ADU for their in-laws, we are hamstringing that with this bill, which the whole point was, oh, we're gonna bring a bill forward, we're gonna bring a bill forward, we're gonna take care of your problems. Well, we've not, actually, with this bill. So the same thing would, for an accessory dwelling unit, that's maybe a garage, it might not be, that's already there, that someone wanted to convert. It, I don't really understand 800 square feet, so it might not be more than the square footage, but it could not meet, because it's been there a long time, some of the setback parameters in the bill. So those are two issues. How do you think we would tackle that?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. So there's a couple of different questions there, but I'm gonna try to answer all of them. So I think the question is whether this bill would grandfather in a structure like that that was, that's existing but not being used as an ADU right now. So the answer to that, the bill as written, would be no, because subsection eight only would grandfather in a structure that's actually being used as an ADU currently, under the laws that exist right now. So as far as this, this structure, which exceeds the square footage limitation, I think you're right, Ms. Pickard, that they would be looking at applying for a variance to have a larger structure as an ADU, but then would also run into the setback issue as well. So the bill as it's written right now probably would not allow them to move forward with an ADU, because even if they got the variance for the size, they wouldn't be able to get the setback variance. So I think that if you're looking to address a situation like this, you'd probably need some kind of amendment to allow for an existing structure that may not be an ADU, that may not be subject to this variance prohibition or the square footage limitation.
Thank you. That's sort of what I was expecting. I just want to point out, the irony is that if we're grandfathering in existing ADUs, we're sort of allowing people, or we're sort of putting an obstacle in front of people that were really playing by the rules all along, and allowing people that weren't playing by the rules by having, you know, illegal ADUs, and saying now they're okay. I don't know if there's...
It's not current, this individual, it's not currently an ADU, it was an architectural office.
Right, but he's trying to go through the correct process. He's not create, I mean, some of the ADUs that are in existence out there are not, you know, wouldn't be allowed under the current law. So he's been playing by the, you know, by the rules. He's been saying, okay, this can only be, you know, the structure as I have it used, not an ADU, and I would like to make it an ADU. Whereas other, you know, other situations, we have people that have gone ahead and made their structures ADUs, even though it's not allowed.
Well, I guess, I wasn't necessarily, I don't know of that such an individual with how, which has an attached, a detached ADU. I'm just thinking of properties in the county that currently have some sort of accessory dwelling unit that's been there for a long time, maybe before any setback code even existed, and now they're not going to be able to turn that structure into an ADU because the existing structure doesn't meet this bill. I mean, the, I think going through the variance process is the right tool, is, or could be the right tool for situations like that. But we've put in a prohibition to no variances, which I always disagree with, and I voted against the other night. So that is, we, that is, that's something that I think we need to consider. I think we, I think we should reconsider the no variance issue and let folks go through the process, and let our hearing officer decide if it's appropriate or not to grant them.
So there's two ways to tackle this.
I do have one point of clarification on something you said, Ms. Rodvian. The grandfathering clause in the bill would only grandfather ADUs that exist legally under the current law. So those right now are only ADUs that are within a structure. Detached ADUs are not currently allowed. So I don't see this grandfathering clause as legalizing anything that is illegal right now, so, because that ADU would not be in compliance with the provisions of the code as it exists today. So the only ADUs that would be grandfathered are those that are within a single-family dwelling already, in compliance with the code.
Okay, I have to go back and look again. This probably falls within the, so many things we debated, and I'm not clearly remembering, but I know that there were some provisions that a grandfathered ADU did not have to meet.
Right. Yeah, that would be the provisions that are in subsection four, five, six, and seven.
Those are, let's see?
That is the, the square footage limitation, but that square footage limitation only applies to detached ADUs, so there are no current allowable detached ADUs. The separate entrance provision, the street address provision, and the short-term residential rental provision are the ones that would not apply to existing ADUs.
I think I'm, I'm getting stuck, because, you know, the whole, my understanding of the grandfathering clause is that there probably are, you know, detached ADUs that are out there that weren't permitted as such. And so they, if that person then would like to be grandfathered in, then they would not be subject to section four. Is that, am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, and right now, detached ADUs are not allowed under the code. So there really would be no grandfathering, it would only grandfather a use that is legal right now, which is, detached ADUs are not allowed.
I see. So, so how is that, how is that grandfathering? If we're not, what, I mean, if we're only, we're grandfathering things that are, because there aren't new limitations.
Right, and actually, that grandfathering provision with regard to subsection four probably means nothing. I think that that actually was a carryover from an earlier version of the bill that limited the square footage for all ADUs, including the attached ADUs.
Okay.
So I don't think that grandfathering provision with regard to subsection four actually would apply to anything.
Okay. So, for example, subsection five, which is not a current requirement, a separate entrance, that is an example of something that would be grandfathered.
Right, five, six, and seven, the short-term residential provision.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think I was overextending the intent, or the meaning of the grandfathering clause.
No problem.
So we still, we'll, I guess we'll discuss how to proceed if, you know, we go back and look at the variance, or, you know, whether we want to bring an amendment. So I think that's a decision we'll have to make.
And we would be happy to work with council over the next week in advance of the meeting to work out the technicals.
Sure, okay. The 20th. So, oh.
When does it expire?
Oh, it's Monday. When does it expire? No, it expires in April.
Okay.
April, so we have a little bit of time. As much as I would love to, you know, hurry up and get a final vote on this, if we need to, you know, if we need to fix things, we should fix things.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for the discussion on bill 623. Next ordinance, bill number 1223. An ordinance concerning conveyance of surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know Christine Neder is here from Office of Law. Mr. Daniels from Real Estate was stuck in traffic, I don't know. Oh, here he comes. So 1223 approves the disposition of almost three acres of property in Annapolis Junction. You'll recall that this is the second step in the surplus process. This bill approves the sale of the property for a total of $2,224,000 and some change to the Microsoft Corporation, which owns several adjacent surrounding parcels. The council's previous bill, if you want to look it up, was, or excuse me, previous resolution, was 4522, which determined that this property was surplus, or was surplus pursuant to county code regulate, requirements. The county did perform two independent appraisals of the property, the average of which is the sale price. Representatives from Real Estate and Office of Law are here to answer any questions you may have.
Quick question. How many properties, individual properties do we own in the county? I don't know, who knows that? Because it seems like, I know, just a ballpark. Because it seems like, I know, just a ballpark.
It's in excess of 2,000.
Oh, wow, okay. All right, because I always see these survey, the conveyance of surplus property. I'm like, wow, how much property do we own over the years? Okay. No questions here, that's pretty, for me at least.
It's nice when things are straightforward.
Yes, so thank you. Bill number, uh, thank you for discussion on 1223, and then we'll discuss bill 1323. Mr. Barron?
I got a number of people making their way up here. Ms. Emmerich, our Director of the Office of Emergency Management. I think we have Assistant Fire Chief Schultz, Captain Rodriguez from our Police Department, Ms. Velez from Inspections and Permits, and from our Office of Law, Mr. Ethan Hunt. So 1323 is a big bill, so I'm going to take a, a few minutes to walk through it for us. But I want to sort of start with, this is a necessary bill that we need to put in. We've had situations in this county where large events have occurred and our public safety agencies and county are finding out about it on Facebook and scrambling to ensure public safety and traffic control and ensuring that the events are safe for the public. So I want to sort of start with that and, and sort of tell you the story of how we got to this point. 1323 stems out of discussions over, how long, Preity? Two years? With county agencies about the need for a process to ensure that special events in the county receive adequate support and county resources to ensure the safety and welfare of the participants and the general public. The county currently does not have a process in place to address the needs of special events, and that goes to the point I was making about us having to scramble because we learn of a, you know, 5,000-person event on Facebook. This has resulted in instances where events have had inadequate crowd control, inadequate security, inadequate traffic management or first aid coverage. When situations like these arise, county agencies frequently have to step in and fulfill these needs for the general safety and welfare of, of our public. And often we've done this with, with little or no notice, leading to additional county costs and stress on our public safety agencies, calling people in for extra overtime or back from a day off. These, these impacts are, are significant, and the bill before you sets out a process which we believe is the minimum burden on our event promoters and places where special events happen. Our goal here is not for the county to charge major fees or, or make money. This is to ensure the safety and welfare of all involved. So the way the bill works is it requires organizers of special events to apply for a permit at least 60 days in advance of an event. The permit application will require an organizer to list the number of anticipated participants and describe the event and resources the sponsor has in place to ensure the security of the event and the health and safety of all involved. The application will have a $50 fee, which the county may waive if it is in the best interest of the county. The county is required to act on a permit application within 30 days and may only deny the permit for specifically enumerated reasons. If part of the application, if as part of the application or the county's review, it is determined that county staffing or equipment is needed for the event, the county will provide an estimate of cost that the sponsor will be responsible for. Organizers will have to pay 75% of this cost upfront and the remaining 25% within 30 days of the conclusion of the event. If the event sponsor wishes to provide their own resources, they just need to show the county that they are doing so. So you are not obligated to use county services unless we make a determination that your coverage is insufficient and you don't remedy that. Again, regarding these special events charges, we can waive all, part or all of these costs if, if it's in the best interest of the county. This is not intended to be a gotcha bill or, or a money grab, leaving event organizers with a large tab. It is intended to help work with folks to address and preempt the need for county services. We have a number of amazing and fantastic events that happen all across the county, and, and we're fortunate that we have a number of great partners who put these events on. Bill 1323 simply helps make sure that these needs are met in a safe and coordinated manner. So the experts at the table have put a lot of work into, to getting this bill here to this place, and, and we're happy to answer any questions. One thing to note, at the appropriate time on the bill hearing, we will, we will proffer an amendment. In discussions, number of events are already in process of planning. The county i- is, is currently eating these costs, so we, we are going to delay the, the application of the collection of fees until the beginning of this year to give the, the industry some time to adjust to the new regulatory scheme. This amendment just puts it until January 1, 2024, before we collect fees. Event organizers and such will still have to notify the county, and we'll all have to make sure we have our coordination in place, but no fees until the beginning of next year if you pass that amendment. So with that, I know it's a complicated bill, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I have several things, but just one thing to clarify to its states in the bill, this does not pertain to events, this is essentially outside events. This is not at our local community center that's having an event or something like that. These are for things outside that would involve coordination with more safety personnel and roads.
Correct. Bottom of page two, line 51, "special event does not include," and you'll see a whole list there.
Okay. So a school event, so for instance, a school is having a fun day on a Saturday, or, you know, a booster-thon event or something like that, do they fall over? I know it says schools, but this is, we're talking about now at an outside event for a school. Would this fall, would that fall under this permitting process? If they have it, like on a Saturday, they're having it on the school grounds?
I'll let the experts, but the way that I've been, as a layperson, thinking about it, are they closing roads? Are they requiring additional public safety there? If so, then yes, it would be.
Okay.
Preity Emmerich, Director of OEM. I would agree with that in terms of what do you see of what a special event is and the criteria we have laid out.
So that would, for schools, all right. So Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec has tournaments and things like that all the time. They have their own kind of certification permitting process. How is that going to mesh with this?
So it's same sort of situation, right? A normal, I'm renting a pavilion at a park, you're not going to need this.
Right.
Having a 10K that is going to close Quiet Waters Park, and we're going to run around Quiet Waters and need to have traffic control, sanitation, and first aid, then yes, you would need to.
So the, and the waiver process, so I believe currently Parks and Rec can waive certain things on their own. Will this now, will this now take that away from Parks and Rec or, and move that to the county for the permitting side, or how?
Well, Parks and Rec is the county.
Right, well, you know what I, you know what I mean. Will it move out of the, out of the Parks and Rec?
For a, no, it is not our intention for like a, I'm renting a pavilion again or, or having a picnic in the park, no. But if, if there is public safety needs or additional, then yes, that would, that would fall under this bill.
And would they, would Parks and Rec be able to make that decision, or permitting would need to make that decision?
So the intent of this bill is to have that coordination, because understanding what Rexon Parks does within their parks and understanding also that they have certain criteria of how you treat the parks, we want to make sure that those subject matter experts still have control over the events within those parks. So that's going to be in coordination with the special event process.
Okay, that's it for now.
Real quick, just to, before we move to the next speaker or the next council member, will there be updates on the, so when you log into Rexon Park, they obviously have a portal in which you can rent, or even a school system? Will there be amendment or modifications of that where if it's an outdoor event and it may exceed, it links into the permit office so that it's integrated, all in one, one space?
What we're planning to do is consolidate the sources in one portal, and so that portal is currently in development. So in terms of, I wish I could show you the portal right now. Really, it, really, it does detail where you want to have the event, how many people. And what that triggers is certain criteria based on the information you put in. So there's the information of, okay, the location is a school, or the location is a park. It will drop down in terms of where to find more information, or if there's additional criteria you will have to meet through those entities.
Sure. Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems to me from this conversation that the Glenn Burney Carnival is going to need to get a permit, that maybe they don't have currently, I mean, they've been operating with public safety and sanitation and all the things for over 100 years, but maybe, so now we're going to have to take a little step and do this permit ahead of time and pay their $50, yes?
Which the county could waive if, if they asked.
Sure. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, although I think I know the answer, the Andrew Puski Turkey Bowl that happens at Gork Park on Thanksgiving Day. I think I've assured him that he will not need to apply for a term that, for his pickup, but I, I want to make, I want this on the record that I've asked about it.
We would be happy to support an amendment that specifically adds that in.
The Puski Amendment. Ms. Ledbetter?
I have a variety of questions. I think I'm going to stick with, on the topic that Ms. Hummer was just on. When I look at, I'm looking at page two, it starts at line 36, and it goes into the, what a special event means. So it's an event for which, and then it lists three separate conditions. Are these ands, or are these ors? So is it specific and exclusive use of public streets, alleys, rightaways, et cetera, and the safe and normal movement, and the use of county services, or is it, or are these ors?
Ors?
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Does this include if you have an event at your house? I'm asking that because a guy called me, he's Italian, and he said, if my family gets together, we might have more than 50 people. I was like, well, that's bad. That's a lot, that could be a problem. And so that's why I'm asking, like, because I don't see anywhere where there's an exemption for private residences if people are having an event at their own home. If you had more than 50 people, this seems like that could trigger, even if you're not requesting any county services.
I mean, that's, I don't think so, because unless they're closing streets and requiring public safety for their event, I mean, I don't know how raucous that family gets, but...
I don't know.
No, in all seriousness, the, the requirements that Councilwoman Ledbetter just listed, if, if they meet one of those, then yes, they would. If they don't, it would not require a permit.
Okay. So as long as it doesn't trigger anything under nine I, one, two, or three, then it doesn't trigger this, you don't need a permit?
That was our intent.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Because there are a number of venues in District Six, but a number, that's an understatement, both inside the city limits and outside of the city limits. Things, for example, like, I'm guessing you probably already work closely with the city for things like at the People's Park, where it's county property, but it's located within the city limits. And I'm trying to think if there would be other instances in the city of Annapolis that might touch on, or that might be touched by this law. But thankfully for this conversation, most of those are probably governed by city law or even state, state law. Okay, so then...
I believe so, yes.
So then that would move on to venues outside of the city limits, and I particularly, there's, you know, a number, but the ones that come to mind are the Maryland Renaissance Festival and the county fairgrounds. For example, the Maryland Renaissance Festival, would their entire season could be treated as a single event, so they wouldn't not necessarily, I mean, they wouldn't have to apply for a separate event permit for every day that the festival's open?
That is correct. So you could apply for a multi-day, and so I think RenFest does like 19 or 20 days a year is what they're allowed, so they could apply in, in bulk for those once they know those dates. And, and just to say, I think the, the fairgrounds and, and the RenFest are excellent partners, and, and we have a, a good working relationship with them now. When we drafted this bill, we drafted it with the intent of not, not adding more burdens other than really a notification to the county and a description that the RenFest can't do this because they run the event, but at the fairgrounds, they could require a promoter who is, who is renting the fairgrounds to do all of this work and get the permit from the county.
Okay, and so in that instance, the information that's required, and I apologize, I haven't looked at the bill in more detail at this point, but the information that would be required in the permit is probably very similar to the conversations you already have. Okay, and then with, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say yes, instead of just nodding my head.
So it's on the record. Yes, thank you. And then, you know, you brought up the issue of the fairgrounds where, you know, they're, they frequently rent out their property to other entities that, you know, will hold events on the fairgrounds. And is there clarity as to who would be responsible for the permit? Would it be the property owner or the event promoter, or the event?
It would be the event promoter.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So that's probably something that the fairgrounds needs to just make sure is part of their regular communication now, that, and probably, again, these are already conversations that you regularly have, you know, how many people you're anticipating, what facilities already exist. I, I mean, I'm just going off the cuff, and you're the expert here, I should let you talk. Yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Just a follow-up question on Mr. Volkey's question about the private residence. I just want to clarify. So when I read, I'm looking again at that number nine I, and I'm looking specifically at number two. When I read the safe and normal movement of vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic, I'm thinking that that could be as broad as more, more traffic than typical on an average day. But I heard you say, Mr. Barron, specifically, do they plan to shut down a road? And so I was just looking for a little bit of clarification specifically about the intent around that number two, so that we can have a very clear understanding, because I can think of parties that I have been to, friends or family, where there's more than 50 people, and yeah, there's a little bit more traffic on the road. Do they close the road? No. So if you could just expound on that, I'd appreciate it.
Our intent was not to require, like, you know, you could have a, a car accident that would add additional traffic to the road, right? That, that wasn't our, our intent. Our intent was you're shutting down a portion of the road or, or the public right-of-way for the event. And I'll let Preity or anybody else confirm that point.
Yes, I would confirm. Yes, I would confirm that. That is not our, listen, it's not our intention to impact private neighborhood parties that may experience a little more congested traffic for a temporary period.
Awesome, thank you. If, if I may, a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing that has come up for me from some constituents, we have a lot of churches in particular in District Seven that are blessed with a fair amount of property that they love to use for outside services. Community, not a community events, but church events. Easter egg hunts always come to mind for some reason. But oftentimes, these are larger places of worship. Obviously, there's some traffic impacts. The intent around those groups falling under this for, because obviously we're looking at line fifty-three on page two where it says an event held inside. But in these cases, we'd be talking about outdoor events.
So if you are gathering, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty folks, and there is an impact to, that would require the specific and exclusive use of the streets or the safe and normal movement or additional county services, then they would have to apply for a permit. But I don't think that sort of a regular run-of-the-mill Easter egg hunt would, would hit that threshold. The, the county's intent here is not to, to shut any of these down.
Thank you.
Real quick. So on page four, section, I guess, eleven, eleven, one oh four. The consideration of a permit application. So the A, timing, on the timing one, the A two. What happens if, if an event is within that fourteen-day window? That's, maybe it's a, a march or something like that that comes up, that obviously is going to impact streets. Or some sort of, some other sort of, uh, uh, event that's, that's a social sort of call. Will it be, it said grant or deny the permit? Obviously, there's flexibility on the permitting office to, to issue that. But how, how are those treated?
So that, we did write flexibility into the law to, to deal with because you might have sort of spontaneous or, or close to spontaneous. And, and we would work with the organizers to ensure. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, and we, we understand there's events like that, right? And we want to make sure to be inclusive and to recognize, especially with marches, et cetera. So there is that waiver, obviously, when talking about the best interest of the county or the application deadline, fees, et cetera.
Sure. And, and how do you judge falsehoods? So like an issuance, number four, was it eleven B and then number four? There's a false sort of representation, representation on the application. So if, if I planned an event and thought a hundred people were going to show up and three hundred showed up, what happens to the applicant?
I can answer that, and I don't know if also fire or public safety would like to jump in, but there have been situations like that. You can't, you can't always
Hell, our fundraisers, we, we assume fifty, a hundred people show up and ten show up, right? So we, and sometimes it's the other way.
But the great thing about this application process is that we know the sponsor, right? So it balloons from a hundred to three hundred. And getting in touch with that sponsor and making sure that, okay, what's going on here? Getting that situational awareness and trying to support that sponsor. But on the flip side, if the event gets out of control, they're not welcome back then, right? If they really misrepresented what the event was going to be. Similar thing happened in Howard County, I think, a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago, where they had that big food festival. And the sponsor misrepresented how many people were going to be there. And it did create problems, and that sponsor is no longer allowed in Howard County because they really endangered the safety of the residents there.
Sure.
I totally understand that this is not in any way to try to limit things, but just want to clarify for that. We have a number throughout the county, some on a regular basis, but some as a one-time thing. Food giveaways that occur at places, which often require extra police and personnel and traffic things to get those coming through. With those churches or organizations that are doing these food giveaways need to apply for a permit. If they're doing one on a Saturday at wherever or on a weekday, that it might involve, if they're not a regularly scheduled event.
I, I think it might, again, going back to that criteria here on page two, that if they are requiring additional county services to say direct traffic, it might require a permit. But those, that is exactly sort of why we built the waiver of fees and the flexibility into the language. So that in those situations, the county can be flexible.
Right. I'm not so concerned because I do think that would probably fall under something we waived the fee. I think it's perhaps a notification for some of these groups that have been doing it for a long time, if never required a permit before, that, that that change is out there. And also, and I don't know a better way to say it, but a better way to word it, but that, that it can be waived for the best interest of the county is mighty broad and rather vague about what would fall under best interest of the county of that. So I, I don't know the solution for that, but I like that we have lots of flexibility to make the waiver. But that makes it pretty open-ended.
We worked, I think, very hard to ensure flexibility and argued internally about the best choice of, of language. Because you don't want to, to miss, you know, a, a, a food giveaway, for example. So we didn't want to enumerate the types that would, so then you have to have that kind of flexibility. Then, you know, the county can apply some judgment.
Thank you.
Ms. Rovian?
Thank you. Another instance comes to my mind that I think might be just, I'm, I, I imagine that maybe this is one you've already discussed and you would probably treat, you know, gently. But I know in District Six and surely everywhere in the county, there have been very large funerals that you obviously don't have thirty days' notice. You know, sometimes you may have, you know, less than forty-eight hours' notice. But you could, you know, have that need. And is it an exception that I haven't identified?
So yeah, we specifically thought about that one. It's kind of hidden top of page three. You could miss it if you glanced quickly, line one. Because it's attached to the special event does not include a funeral procession.
Okay. For instances like that, though, where, you know, again, this might kind of fall in the same category where, you know, people have like a public gathering, you know, just sort of like a vigil after. And unfortunately, that has happened multiple times over the past, my, during my term of service and before. Where you gather a large number of people together in a public, you know, an outdoor public space. And there, the coordinators may or may not know that there is a permitting requirement. How would that be addressed? And is there, you know, is there something like that to address? Or is there a provision here that would address something like that?
So again, that's sort of a, one of those that would fall under like a spontaneous where the county would apply some flexibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm, I think probably my, my concern is, you know, I, I, I know all the, the individuals involved here, but going forward, which is, you know, I, I would hope that future administrations would apply the same level of compassion that I anticipate you will. But, you know, having that laid out as much as possible, I think, is, is helpful.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you. I wanted to revisit again the, the language where it says this, in the best interest of the county because it is used multiple times. Page four, line three to four. Page six, line four and five. And again, down at line thirty-five and thirty-six. I just, it, it makes me a little bit nervous. And this is not a criticism of anyone at the table or the administration. I'm, I'm trying to think forward to, we have no idea what our county government looks like in ten, fifteen, twenty years. Who's at the table making these decisions? I really respect the idea and the value that you're placing on flexibility. At the same time, there are risks, you know? So when I think of an exemption for the fees in the best interest of the county, who's determining what the best, best interest of the county is? How do we make sure that this bill isn't picking winners and losers, losers, rather? So that the Glen Burnie Fest, Festival gets to have a waiver, but the agricultural event in South County doesn't? Or, you know, however we might want to, that may trickle down. I think that's the fear and what, the nervousness around that, that broad language. I don't know if there's a way to still allow for flexibility, but tighten that up a little bit. At least I was just mentioning, you know, a fee schedule, a criteria for what a waiver is. You know, if we're going to waive everything for nonprofits, then is, maybe we could list that nonprofits will be waived. Just kind of throw in some different ideas out. Because that language is just incredibly troubling for me.
So we would be open to discussing ways to, to, to do this, but I will tell you, we have been down that rabbit hole. Because there are a number, like every time you think of enumerating something, you're leaving somebody out. Or you're including, you know, a ten thousand-person event that will require a bunch of police and county services where there is a, a, a ticket charge and the organizers could pay for it. So it, it is very difficult. And I think the, the, this administration is committed to ensuring equity and fairness in the application of that. And I think it will be the responsible, responsibility of future county councils and future administrations to, to live up to that as, as it will be for us. If you can come up with some magic words, we're all ears. But I will tell you how, we've been working on this for a while and we've gone down several different rabbit holes to do it. I understand the, the, the concerns around this. However, if we don't build in flexibility, we could end up harming events that, that should move forward. And that is, the intent of this bill is not any kind of regulatory structure that would restrict people's freedom to hold events. It is to ensure that the county public safety agencies are aware of what's going on and have the appropriate resources to bring to bear in the event of an emergency or just to manage the event.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And, and so I'll be transparent, and obviously, I'm a Marine reservist. And, and that had, regionally, I'm responsible for the Toys for Tots program. And so every, obviously, it's only seasonal, so it's only once a year. But there are certainly times where we try to help about thirteen thousand kids. I want to, in Anarona County-ish. And, and not that it matters to the other jurisdictions. But there have been several instances where we've, we've put out to these families, hey, if, if you need help, almost like the food bank to some extent, or not the food bank, the, the, which you mentioned earlier about them coming out to serve the food lines, the food lines specifically. And so sometimes I just don't know who's going to show up, right? And, and Prince George's County, because I'm responsible for, for them as well. You know, during the COVID years, we went from in-person to vehicle assistance with the toy distribution. And so we serve about seven thousand families over there, about twenty-four thousand kids. And there was a line, and we actually did it out of, like, the park over there. In their huge parking lot. And that line was probably like a mile and a half long that stretched all the way into Anarona County from, man, I feel like I'm getting old. What's the, the theme park that's right there and off of three oh one? Six Flags. Six Flags. So it went from Six Flags, if you know where that's at, to the Anarona County line. That is a long line of cars, like super long lines. And we've had that in Anarona County when we've, after we've done our initial distribution and families have missed it for a variety of reasons. And then they come back. We try to set up a special day for them before Christmas to assist them. And so sometimes, you know, that, those lines are not, certainly not as long as the one that was in Prince George's. But it, it will certainly eat up roadways and, and traffic coming. So I'm trying to figure out how do, how do we best, and we always work with the police and fire. Hell, they're volunteering in the, in the warehouse. So they, they know exactly what's, what's going on. But you're, the, the application, like obviously, it's a nonprofit. Zero people on, on our team gets paid zero in the twelve, thirteen million dollars that we've given to Anarona County over the years. But this would require during that application process to potentially, you know, like, you know, bathrooms or things like that that we may or may not have funding to, like, how would that be impacted?
Well, so first, Prince George's does have a similar special events setup. So again, the, the purpose here is, is for our public safety agencies to have intelligence, not play gotcha. So
And for the record, I don't know if I ever filled one out in Prince George's County.
And yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't imagine a situation where any future county government shuts down a Toys for Tots event.
We hope so. There's some Grinches out there.
And I, I just want to echo that. In the discussions we had in development of this legislation and the work groups we've met in monthly for the past year and a half, that is the exact type of situation where it's situational awareness. You're probably going to get EMS or whatever public safety needs you have as volunteers, right? Or even helping out. So again, just to emphasize, it's more of the situational awareness because things can happen. Things can go wrong. And so having that situational awareness of what is happening in our county to best assist you and the residents and whoever is in that line is really what the main intent of this is. And really, we just have not had a good grasp and a coordinated way of doing that.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when, when thinking about the longstanding Glen Burnie Carnival, other than filling out a piece of paper and dotting all those i's and crossing those t's. I mean, they already do that and they, they build in the budget for the reserve officers and the sanitation and the EMS volunteers and things like that. So I'm thinking they're going to be like a example of a best practice. They just need to let the county know that from that week, the last week of July, this carnival's happening and bring your kids, sort of thing. Because I think they, they do all of the things in here already.
It's just filling out that portal.
Sure, sure, okay. And then when we talk about what's in the best interest of the county, I read it as what's in the best interest of the county, not, not the Arundel Center. Is that, I'm, I'm reading it as Toys for Tots is in the best interest of the county. Breast cancer race is in the best interest of the county, not who's sitting on the fourth floor. Am I understanding that right?
That is exactly our intent.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you. I'm specifically thinking, as I'm sitting here, about some of the agricultural events that happen in South County where they're not inside by the nature of the beast because there is no facility, per se. Would I be correct, and I hate making assumptions, but would I be correct? Since it's on private property, if they're not asking for exclusive use of the roads and they don't need county services, then this bill does not affect those agricultural community events?
You're looking, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you. And then, no other lights? Might they continue? Could you tell me how you landed on, public assembly means a group of fifty? Just your, your thought process on using fifty as the number? I did a little bit of research to some other surrounding company, surrounding counties, and it does vary. All the way up to two hundred, I think one county, actually, it's like two thousand before you have to get the permit. I'm by no means advocating for that. But if you could just tell me some, you know, what your thought process, why is fifty the magic number? Is there a reason? Is there a reason why it's not seventy-five, a hundred, or something along those lines?
I'll, I'll ask the, the public safety folks to add in, but I just wanna say there is no magic number. I mean, you have to make a choice.
Right.
I know in consideration, num- numbers doesn't matter in terms of the situation that surrounds it, right? So you can have a ruckus party of fifty people that gets out of hand versus five hundred at a knitting convention. That's all peaceful, right? I know they're armed, it's okay. But, that's why the numbers are a tricky thing to have, but something to put in there, right? But I will yield to my public safety colleagues if they wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, I can just give you two quick, an, an idea of two separate situations. We had some filming here last year, stunt motorcycle filming. Probably forty, forty-five people, which is a generally small number of people. But because of the risk and the activity level, required actually a lot of resources. On the same thing, there's the, the Easter egg hunt that has three thousand people, but not requesting any resources, not closing any streets. So the numbers is a, is a bit of a challenging thing to chase.
Okay. Thank you for expounding on it, though, I do appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Try not to, so the, the hundred that you, and the fiscal note that came down for this, there was an anticipated hundred K to a hundred fifty potentially that was be generated by the fees. Is that, if, if, one, why the fee if, if the intent is just situational awareness? And if, if the fee is necessary, what, what is that being used for?
So, I think the, that hundred, a hundred fifty thousand number also includes the use of certain county services. So we were very deliberate in the bill not to require an event promoter to use county services, right? Councilwoman Pickard mentioned the Glenn Burney Carnival, the Ren Fest. Councilwoman Rodvian mentioned specifically contract with a lot of volunteer fire departments or private entities that provide these services, so they can use those services. Not every promoter will want to, so there is the option, not the requirement, but the option to have county personnel provide some of those services. So I think that's where most of that money comes from. That would reimburse the county for overtime costs, et cetera. The, the fifty dollar fee, frankly, it, if you, you kind of need a fee to, to ensure compliance, right? You gotta pay your, your fee to get any kind of permit. So, we tried to keep it very low so that it would not be a burden on any event promoter. It is fifty bucks.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Sorry, I warned you I had a lot of questions today. I appreciate everyone's patience. A question for, I'm looking at page five, line forty-one, a letter F where it talks about canceled events. And I'm wondering if there's any interpretation or intent within that clause for rain date? You know, so the event isn't canceled, but there's gonna be a rain date. Is that something that's gonna be in the application for the permit process? Where a, a group could articulate in advance that this is our rain date? So that, like, how, how do you envision that working?
That's a really good question, I'm gonna give it.
We can definitely put that in the portal as an alternate date, right? And we've already had festivals that have had to cancel due to rain dates. And we have worked with these sponsors to, you know, staff it as best as we could for the new date.
Awesome, thank you.
And I think my last question is, so you're in the EOC, is there, during these weekend or even summer, where all these mass events, is there a display on a board that kind of tracks all of these different activities that are occurring? So you're, so the administration is aware of it?
I was just thinking, if, if they don't, they should.
I'll make sure to put that in my budget. But we do have a special events calendar. Yeah, that will be on the website. So that everybody knows, there are certain block off dates, right? Where public safety resources may not be available. There might be days where we have six festivals. And sorry, you're gonna have to look for another date to have your festival. But they'll be available on the website, so everybody can see.
Thank you.
And that's even before you fill out.
The application, yeah. All right, I see no more lights. Thank you for the, the information. Next, we'll discuss bill number fourteen twenty-three, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start while the administration is getting their next team up at the table. This is a very straightforward bill, hopefully straightforward, generated by an experience of a constituent who reached out upon the denial of their application to rent an apartment. So, as some of you may recall, we passed a legislation, or local fair housing legislation that requires, or that I should say prohibits discrimination on a whole number of bases that are not allowed, including, I'll, I probably won't get everything on the list, but race, gender, religion, ethnic background, immigration, status, LGBTQIA plus status, source of income. And the experience of the constituent was when they were denied the application to rent the property, they said, why was, you know, why was my application denied? And the landlord said, I don't know. We contract that to a third party who, you know, makes the decision based on the application. And so, in the spirit of the law, to me, that seems that, you know, it makes it very difficult to enforce the provisions of our Fair Housing Act if a landlord, if I don't know is an acceptable answer for why was that person's application denied? And so this is really to just close off what I see as a potential loophole in our fair housing law, to make sure that we truly don't have discrimination that in, you know, in, you know, in rental applications. So, that's, that's basically the bill.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you to the sponsor. I have Asha Smith, who you heard from earlier, Lisa Sorrow from ACDS, and Kelly Kenny from Law. The administration supports the bill. Think it's a, a, a good addition to our law. You know, we, we definitely share the concern as, as I think we brought down several bills in, in previous years about ensuring fair and equitable access to housing. We're, we're happy to provide some expert support, but I do wanna flag, and, and I appreciate our conversation yesterday, councilwoman. I, I didn't have the feedback yet when we talked, but I, I did get a little note this morning. One of our concerns, and I think we can address this with, with a small change to the language, we aren't specifying the manner of notice from the, the renter or the denied renter to the landlord. How, you know, how that written notice has to be delivered to the landlord, which, you know, could lead to some conversations around, well, I never, I never got that email, or I never. So, it's some way that, that, there's a, an additional requirement to ensure that it can be proved that the notice was sent and, and, cause there is some, there's a pretty quick clock here.
Yes.
So.
I would absolutely be amenable to an amendment that reflected that.
So with that, happy to answer any of the council's question. I don't know if Asha or anybody else on the panel has anything to add.
Yeah, my, my question to the sponsor was, you, you may enlighten me with your response.
Probably not. I was just going to add that the Fair Credit Reporting Act, which is federal, already has a very similar federal requirement in terms of a credit report. So if the reason for the denial is because of a credit score, a renter's, or a prospective tenant is already entitled to receive that information. The only other note that I would make is that applicability. I, I would consider whether this should apply to owner occupied housing. So, you know, it's obvious that it would apply to larger developments maybe, but if you're talking about a home where somebody is maybe renting a floor, if it's a two-family house, a duplex, something like that, you'd wanna consider whether that requirement would apply.
Definitely, definitely understand that. I also, though, feel like that's a conversation that we had when we passed the Fair Housing Act legislation itself. And I apologize, I don't recall what, where we landed in terms of, in terms of, you know, sort of, I'll just say the owner occupied rental.
I just asked you, yeah. No, I, I, I recall that conversation as well. I think we need to, I need to go.
We just need to go back and check, okay. That's, that's fine. Obviously, I haven't either, so.
Just cause I'm curious about the, the whole process, how, and I get the credit score piece of it, certainly get the concerns of an owner occupied. If there was a female that was renting out a house, who had a house and lived there, she might be hesitant to rent to a male, which totally understand, right?
Exactly the example I would use.
Totally understand that. If, if there was a single-family home in, in this, in this particular instance, and, and the applicant applied, if there was multiple, would the response then be, you know, we just chose someone else? Like, like, how do you distinguish between, if it was, maybe this was a sponsor or, or some, one of you at the table, if it was multiple requests for the, the occupancy of that, that establishment or that house, that unit, and they just simply went with a, a different person who rented it? How do you, do you say, is that what you say in the, the letter? We just went with another offer or another prospective person?
And I, I would just respond that I think we need to be consistent with how we laid out the law in the Fair Housing Act. So if, you know, if those types of landlords already have that leeway, then they should, the intent here would be for them to have the leeway in this, you know, in this bill as well. So I will, I can look into that.
Okay. I was just curious, cause there was multiple applicants. Did you say, well, we just went with someone else? And then will they then say, well, why didn't you choose me out of that? Then you're having to open up, I mean, I'm, I'm all about them having an opportunity to understand, at least that they didn't get it, certainly sent me a letter. I think I applied for like a federal job once and got a letter back from them saying, you, you were not included in the pool, or whatever the language was. And then I just went to find another job. And so it was kind of frustrating that I didn't know one, but I also understand the bigger system in place. But, so we're just trying to, I was just trying to understand better, how do you distinguish between those instances where multiple people and applying for the same apartment, and one doesn't get it and they request this, and then what's, what's in that letter?
I mean, I think, you know, especially when we're talking about large, larger landlords, that's still a very relevant thing for a person to know. You know, was it, you know, first application? What is their process for choosing between multiple applicants? And it needs to be something other than the criteria that we've laid out in the Fair Housing Act. I, I don't know, you know, you know, what, I guess there, there is a, you know, there is a question of what would be considered an acceptable answer, but it definitely needs to be something other than those things that we laid out in the Fair Housing Act. Could you say, I got a bad vibe from, from you? I don't think that would also, I mean, I think you have to be a little more specific. And, you know, again, this is where I would ask any experts to weigh in on this. Because otherwise, our legislation really doesn't have any teeth.
I, I would just say that in terms of investigating fair housing discrimination, there are some pretty well-established best practices. It's not always the easiest thing, whether it's fair housing or employment, because nine times out of ten, I won't say ten out of ten, but nine times out of ten, a person with discriminatory animus is not going to say, I didn't give it to you because you're a woman. Or, you know, they're, they're not going to lay out the discriminatory reason. They're gonna give you some sort of a pretext. And then in the course of an investigation, your job is really to figure out what the underlying reason might have been. In terms of credit reporting, a lot of landlords will say, I relied on your credit score, right? That's a very clear number. So, you know, in an investigation, what you do is say, well, show me the credit score of the person who you ultimately selected. And if their credit score was better, your case is kind of done, you know? In some of the other more nebulous areas, it might be a little bit more difficult to determine why someone made a decision. I don't know that a person will always say, I got a bad vibe. It could be anything from you smell to, I mean, it, it could be anything as long as it's not discriminatory. And people are uninclined to give the discriminatory reason if they have one.
Then let me ask this question, is this bill helpful? Do you think it would provide useful information to have something, you know, at least to have the question asked and answered?
Well, I, I, I'll answer that one. I do think the intent of the bill is really good. Because what it would require is the landlord to think twice before they deny somebody. So that they're ensuring that they have a decision that is not based on the tenants or the prospective tenant's membership in a protected class. In terms of whether this bill would have any teeth, that's the, that's the bigger question. Because it's, it's unclear really who would investigate it. Because the, a violation of this bill would not per se be a violation of the fair housing law, right? The, the violation would be not providing a reason for denying an applicant. And that's not necessarily a violation of the Fair Housing Act. So, would it go to a consumer protection agency for complaints? The, the Attorney General's Office does have a landlord-tenant division within the Consumer Protection Agency. I don't know how their resources would, would fit with, or would be able to respond to a complaint based on a local law that doesn't, that goes beyond the state law. I, I just, I think that, I guess I think the enforcement piece of it is gonna be difficult. And where it would go, but I think overall, the intent is excellent. And that, that it would, that it would help ensure that landlords are thinking about their reasons for denying and ensuring that they're not an unlawful reason. And one other reason is that if it is instructive, if the reason is instructive so that the tenant during their next application could, you know, if it, if it is this, the horrible example of somebody that smells bad, they ensure that they have cleaned up their hygiene when they go to their next application. So if there's something that has caused them to not be approved, that they can be told about, that they can change going forward, then that's a worthwhile reason to have the bill.
Okay, thank you. Do you mind if I just follow up? I see there's other lights and I don't wanna, but I just, while we're on this line of thought. If I recall correctly, our Human Relations Commission does have the, they have the power to receive the complaint. I'm not, again, this is really sort of beyond my memory, what, what power we've given them to actually investigate a complaint like this.
Well, what great timing you have. So I can tell you that I, I pretty much do that work for the commission. So, the commission, I, as the human relations officer, I receive the complaints. We've set up some practices and protocols for the investigation of complaints. Um, I assist them in, um, administrating, in the administrative portion of managing the complaint process. So if it's going to go to mediation, we offer that. Um, we've worked with the Office of Law to come up with some procedures. Um, so there is a process by which investigations currently occur. Obviously, as I told you earlier, it's me and Pete Hill in that office, and so, um, you know, that's a really timely inquiry. Um, we certainly could use all the support that we could get in terms of some resources, but, um, that said, that would be our practice. So a complaint comes, you know, to the Commission or it comes directly to me, I evaluate it for sort of legal sufficiency, um, and then we commence an investigation.
Okay.
Through my office. And so just to Lisa's point, um, I think she's right, the intention is really good. A letter like that would serve an important evidentiary function in a case, right? Because if I ask, you know, if I as a prospective tenant ask you why my application was denied and the reason you give me is terrible, um, or it doesn't make any sense, then it's sort of every, evidentiary, you know? I could take that to the Commission and say, they've given me this reason and this reason makes no sense. Um, but I think that that's information that the Commission could otherwise get maybe through other processes, so. I think, I think Lisa's, her assessment is absolutely right. It's a great idea, but I don't know, you know, in terms of, um, enforcing it, how far we can go.
Okay, that's very, I mean, very understandable. Like I said, this was a, from a constituent who may have ended up coming to the Human Resources Commission. I, I don't, this has been long enough that I don't remember if I said, oh, you should reach out to the Human Resource, Resource Commission, um, or Human Relations Commission, my apologies. Um, so I, I guess maybe we can. Oh, no, I'm just not talking into the microphone. If there are ways to make it more, um, you know, to make the intent jive better with the actual result, um, so I will be reaching out to you. Thank you.
Go to Mr. Volkey and then Ms. Picker right after that.
I'm not trying to jump all of you in the questioning, but I am a landlord, I own a rental property, so I'm putting that on the record. I think that I can fairly participate in this without any conflicts, but I have also reached out to the Ethics Commission to get their opinion for it. So as I'm sitting out here, I just wanted to put that on the record to make that clear that I'm, haven't walked off the dais. If I need to do that when this comes up for a vote or a hearing, then I certainly will do what I need to do, but for the moment, I'm just making that disclosure for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Picker?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm inclined to add myself as a co-sponsor to this bill if we're moving forward with the bill. Uh, from what I gather so far from the experts at the table, it seems it would behoove us to add in, um, on page two, line seven, with the notice required, require the, the denied renter to request it in writing. Is that, okay, so that's one thing that would need to happen. And then I got a little lost, I'm going to be honest, in the sanction for violation section, um, when you, so this is not part of the fair housing law in the county or the state, it wouldn't fall under that, this is outside of that. So the denied renter who received, put in their letter of request and what, what would happen next? If, could, could we go through that in, as far as who would even be able to impose, uh, the fine or penalty?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I'll start and then I'll let these two ladies add in as well. I think going along the lines of what Asha had indicated, I think that the Human Relations Commission would have the authority to look at this violation, but it would have to be posed to them as a, as a alleged discrimination in, in housing. And then they would make the determination whether there was a violation of this section, and they do have the authority to impose fines, um, in, in conducting those hearings. But if the allegation is just the failure to provide the letter and it doesn't go to the Commission, there is, um, a question there as to who would enforce it by issuing a citation or a, actually seeking those sanctions.
So if I may follow up, so is there something we could, is there something that we can add to this bill that we need to discuss, uh, or?
It may have to be added specifically into the authority of the Commission to enforce even the failure to provide the letter, and Asha can, can add to that as well, but I think that that would have to be added in, if, if you were looking to make sure that someone could actually enforce the failure to even provide the letter at all.
Okay. Okay, and then just a personal point of privilege, I just wanted to publicly thank Lisa Soro for your tremendous work with housing and eviction prevention over the last, uh, three years. I, I, I just, I think you're an unsung hero and I appreciate everything you've done and keep doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Ledbetter?
No questions. Um, I just also have been waiting patiently to make the same disclosure that Mr. Volkey just made. I am a landlord, uh, here in Maryland and Anarundale County, and so I am also awaiting an ethics ruling, um, on being able to sit here and hear this bill. Thank you.
I actually am going to make the same disclosure, um, but my property, the property, um, it's a house that we bought be, uh, before the market crashed and then could not sell, um, unfortunately, um, but we're actually no longer landlords and the property is not in the state of Maryland, so I think I'm out of the woods with respect to ethics.
Agree. Well, I'll make a disclosure, I'm a renter right now, and so, so it's my application they're going to be denying, that I'm going to ask them to tell me why they denied me, uh, but.
I just want to clarify a couple of things that were said. So this bill, uh, under fair housing, things that, um, the example was brought up, say it was a woman who was renting something else, or we're talking ADUs now, we're having, you know, things that could be in there, and it was brought up, so if a, a single woman who may not feel comfortable renting to a male, if she's renting in her house, um, would that fall, I mean, would that be a violation because she is denying someone based on gender?
Well, I think there's always more to it than that, and I would never answer a hypothetical question, um, like that, but, um, I, I, I think that when you look at the question of whether it's a woman or a man, um, you know, someone might feel intimidated, um, to give someone a reason, and provided that the reason why they're intimidated is not protected class-based, um, so it may just be, you know, I'm a nervous person, I don't want any conflict, I don't want any smoke, um, it's not illegal, I just didn't, didn't like the way you presented or something like that. Um, you know, those very, it, it, they're very, it's hard to parse those things, right? Because then it's what, what made you uncomfortable? But I would say that, um, in the context of a private individual who, you know, may have a house that they're renting or something like that, there could be reasons why they're just not comfortable, um, in a one-on-one interaction, and they may not have the same protection that a corporate structure has, right? Like you may not have corporate security or an attorney on staff that can sort of send a remote letter to someone and, um, it, it, you know, that might be a face-to-face issue and some people aren't terribly comfortable with that. Um, so, you know, I always try to think of those things as, you know, that's not to say that there shouldn't be a bill, it's just that if that's the case, we want to make sure that it's covering the entities that we think it's appropriate to cover.
Right, so to build on that, right, um, I really appreciate the, the intent of the bill and I, I agree with you that it makes people think, it's almost like a built-in, um, equity lens that a landlord has to look at and consider the different, um, reasons of why am I, you know, looking at their own biases of may, way, come through. My concern though is, is for our more individual renters who may have an ADU or one little property, an older lady that's doing it, and the, their knowledge base and ability to respond to people, if they get 40 applications, you know, for their little ADU and they've got to write back and it's someone who's never before, you know, how would they phrase that? Because writing a letter that says, I just felt uncomfortable with you, is not, they're not going to feel comfortable writing that. Um, and where, you know, it may be that, you know, I, it was the daughter of a friend and that's why I chose that person, but the, what reason do you give the others? And so I'm more concerned, not for our big corporate people, I want to, you know, to have that, but from our smaller individual landlords, of how this may impact them and how they respond, um, to those things. And I'm not sure what the answer is on that, but, um, I don't want to put an undue burden on them, also because they often, you know, if it's an older person who's renting, they don't have the knowledge of housing laws and things like that if they've always been renting individually, and they may inadvertently be using, so I'm, I'm kind of thinking out loud on that, but I'm not sure how to, how we get around that.
Mr. Smith? I know there's a couple other lights on, do you mind if I jump in?
No, please, as a sponsor, yeah.
I think I'm inclined to, um, withdraw the bill and bring it back after some of these questions have been addressed. Um, if, I think I'm, because we don't have any amendments, I can do that at our meeting on Monday, is that correct?
We can note that you're going to withdraw, an unofficial withdrawal, I have to have another episode of session.
Okay. Okay, so I think that's what I'm going to do at this point, and I, this conversation has been really helpful, and if it's helpful to continue it, to give me more things, um, when I bring back another bill, I'm happy to continue the conversation.
And just to add, the admin would be happy to participate in those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Picker?
Yeah, I, I, um, I do think, I really like the concept here and I'm, I'm really interested to, to work on it. Um, we know for decades and decades and decades landlords know how to get around fair housing and they do it all the time. Uh, so I think this is, this is a minor, uh, request when, uh, but I, I appreciate the, the work that needs to be done and hopefully we can bring back something that, um, addresses the issue at hand. So thank you everybody for coming today, it's great to see you all.
Yes, I'll echo that, I appreciate it.
All right, seen numerous lights, um, thank you for Bill 1423. Uh, we'll next, next discuss Bill 1623.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Ms. Blair Klosmeyer, I think, is not here, oh no, she's, but coming from that side. Um, so this bill came to, to us at the request of the Ethics Commission, uh, and, uh, the Executive Director, Mr. Batzares, was not able to attend today. He did give me a couple of notes, so I'm going to do my best, Mr. Batzares, uh, but he will be here, uh, for the hearing. The 1623 makes some changes to the public ethics article in the county code. The majority of these changes are part of a required update to our code due to two state bills that passed during the 2021 legislative session. These required changes bolster certain financial disclosure requirements and protections against retaliation for the submission of a complaint. In addition to updating the provisions under state law, 1623 makes certain changes at the request of the County Ethics Commission. The bill removes a requirement that the Ethics Commission reveal the identity of a complainant at any time upon the respondent's request. Mr. Batzares remarked that this is, that this requirement may have a chilling effect on potential complainants coming forward. The Commission noted that the due process rights of a respondent is still protected under this change due to a separate requirement that compels the Commission to send a copy of the complaint with the complainant's identity if the Commission elects to conduct a formal inquiry or hearing on the matter. Um, we're happy to answer any questions and, and again, uh, apologize, Mr. Batzares could not attend, but he will be here for our hearing. And you should have some materials in your packet from the Ethics Commission.
Any questions from the council members? Wow, easy, easy.
I was just going to say, wait till Mr. Batzares gets here anyway, so.
Okay, well, uh, thank you for, uh, the information on 1623. Let's, uh, discuss Bill 1723.
I think, uh, Ms. Karpowitz is making her, her way up and Ms. Kenny is coming as well. Um, so if you all recall, uh, well, some of you will recall, others might have been watching, uh, Bill 6722 approved the county entering into a pilot agreement with the, with Village at Marley Station to create 700, uh, to protect 757 affordable housing units available to households earning 60% or less of, uh, medium area income. Since the passage of 6722, the property owner has transitioned apartments into affordable units as available, but needs additional time to create the required number of affordable units without displacing existing tenants. To meet this need, the county has negotiated an amendment to the existing pilot agreement to set the number of affordable units initially available at 584 and require that 745 affordable units be available by December 31, 2026. Uh, so in, in layman's terms, and I had to get Erin to explain this to me, um, basically the, when the new owner took over, the property wasn't fully affordable, they are transitioning to for, fully affordable, we do not want to be kicking people out who might just be right above the affordability level. So this amendment to the pilot provides a runway for that transition. Uh, I want to thank Ms. Picker for, for joining as a co-sponsor and ha, happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Picker?
I don't have any questions, I just want to impress upon my colleagues that while this got a, uh, original 4-3 vote, um, it was extremely disappointing, uh, during last term that that happened. This is, um, a very large, um, uh, 767 units, I believe, I have that right? 757 units, maybe it was built in 1967, I don't know. It has been part of, uh, it is a, is a lovely community, the new owners are taking it through a really fantastic renovation and improving the outside amenities and including, and updating the inside apartments. I appreciate the need for this extended runway, so we don't have this reverse gentrification, as we might call it, um, and I would, um, strongly, uh, suggest my, my colleagues, join me in co-sponsoring and get on board with, um, making sure we have affordability in the county, um, for decades to come. And I want to also thank Erin for your hard work with all of the pilots last summer, and I look forward to working with you in the future for strengthening our housing policy across the board.
Any additional comments? Okay. All right, thank you for discussion on 1723, uh, Bill number 1823.
This is another one of ours, Mr. Chair, uh, 1823, oh, sorry, uh, I have, uh, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Carrier, uh, from DPW and OPZ respectfully, and, uh, and Ms. Kenny is sticking around. 1823 makes updates to the county's water sewer master plan concerning three properties. The updates are part of semi-annual review by the Office of Planning and Zoning of the Water Sewer Master Plan, and we have folks here to answer any questions. You should have a couple of exhibits in your packet that describe the, the property changes.
Thank you. No additional comments from the council on 1823. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to engage with you all on that. Uh, next let's discuss Bill number 1923, Ms. Rovian.
Thank you. Um, I actually am going to ask at this time if, um, our administrative officer could indeed, it looks like she's probably already working on getting it up on the screen, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I sent to you and the administration yesterday afternoon, um, and, oh, that's perfect, I can just read it.
You can also turn your display, it's actually showing on there if you turn it on.
What?
Yeah, the little button there.
I didn't know these were locked. I think I found, yep, I got it, awesome. Oh, that's fantastic, thank you. Awesome, oh, that's so wonderful.
I do, I do IT as well.
All right, well, thank you so much, that's wonderful, make it much easier, and hopefully folks in, um, in the chambers can still read it on the screen, it looks like most of you are sitting on the side closer to the screen. So, um, why should Anarundale County take action on plastic bags? Um, first, I really want to focus, um, our attention on that this, this bill is not as much about getting rid of plastic bags as it is getting people to change their behavior and bring reusable bags when they shop. Um, this is, you know, something that already happens nationwide in other countries around the world, it's happening in states around the country. Um, so this is just a step towards, um, creating that behavior change. I think in a, a county where we have, you know, several hundreds, I believe, miles of waterfront, um, that, you know, the impact of plastic carryout bags. that, you know, the impact of plastic carryout bags, we all know very well. We see it very well. In fact, I don't know how it got there, but I found a plastic grocery bag in my front lawn this morning, and I, you know, grabbed it before it ended up somewhere that, you know, we don't want plastic bags to end up. So the estimate here is that, based on nationwide numbers. So these are estimates, again, based from National Geographic, who estimated the national figure. But 200, if you kind of break it down by population, spread it around the country, 215 million per year in Anarundel County and 2.16 billion a year in Maryland. We have several examples of other jurisdictions in our state that have already tackled plastic bags, and they've done it in a different, they've done it in different fashions. And so we are luckily able to learn the lessons. You know, sometimes there's good from being a first adopter, and sometimes there's an advantage of being a later adopter. And as a later adopter, we can see how the bills in other parts of Maryland have been effective or not as effective. And then, you know, hopefully, I know that there is interest in the state legislature of eventually passing a statewide ban on plastic bags. And really, again, we should really be talking more, instead of a ban, about changing the behavior to bringing your own reusable bag when you go shop. So we're not, we certainly don't want to just say, okay, we're going to switch out all of the plastic bags to paper bags because that has its own not fantastic environmental impact. Next slide, please. All right, so this is a, so the data that's provided in this PowerPoint was based on an enormous amount of work by the Sierra Club that has done work in Anarundel County and in other jurisdictions around the state. Basically, looking here, we've got a number of stores in Anarundel County that already do not offer single-use plastic bags, and then they have a charge for other bags. So it basically can tell you what this law is likely to do. And of course, people at different, shopping at different grocery stores may have different shopping behaviors to begin with. But in general, currently, well, this is, again, in 2021, 4,009, 4,095 shoppers at seven different chains and 29 different stores. And I can share that with you if you would like. The vast majority of bags are disposable bags, bags, single-use bags. And then the stores that do not offer plastic charge for other bags. You can see that we make great progress in getting plastic bags out of the picture. So any reusable bag is more than half at those stores that are already doing kind of what this law would put in place. A lot of people will, you know, go unbagged. I'm one of those folks that if I have a small grocery order, I'll just shove it all in my purse or carry it out and stick it in my car to avoid using a plastic bag. And then you still have roughly 10% or just under 10% using disposable bags. Next slide. Okay, so these are three different approaches that have been taken in Maryland. One is, so disposable bag fee on all disposable bags. So in some jurisdictions, they actually have a tax. I want to be very clear from the beginning that this bill does not impose a tax. It imposes, it requires a price floor, which is basically just sort of putting in writing what we know stores already have to do. We know that stores have to pay for the bags that they give you at the checkout. So, you know, we kind of think of them as free, but they're not free. They're rolled into the cost that you pay at the grocery store. So this really just makes them say, look, you have to line on your, you know, on your grocery store receipts anytime you give a plastic, a plastic bag, that it's, you know, that we're, we're telling you upfront that the cost is at least 10 cents. And so then we have places that have gone with just a plastic bag ban, and that often unfortunately shifts, just shifts the burden to paper bags. And then third is this hybrid approach, which has been the most effective. And that's the approach that this bill that I'm introducing takes, is this hybrid plan where you ban plastic bags and then you charge, you require stores to charge a minimum of 10 cents for other types of bags. Next slide, please. All right, I'm not going to go through this in great detail, but my colleagues do have this, you know, slide, and I encourage you to go back and look at this, to see the different, the different practices that have taken place in jurisdictions around the state. And so you can see, we have, you know, Montgomery and Howard imposing a 5-cent tax, City of Baltimore, 5-cent tax. Baltimore County is a little closer to what, you know, what I'm proposing, that they have a 5-cent price floor, requiring retailers to charge 5 cents per bag. And then we have these smaller jurisdictions that are doing basically exactly what this bill proposes. Next slide. All right, so this is, you know, a look at Howard County. So in, again, this is all data from Sierra Club, who basically sat in front of grocery stores and just, they did not approach shoppers, but they just sat outside and made observations of what was happening when people came out of the stores and what kind of bags they were using. So before the plastic bag, the plastic bag tax, and there's this indeed a tax, 75% of all the bags were plastic. After the, after the tax went into place, that number decreased. As you can see, the number of paper increased, reusable bags increased, and then the number of people taking no bag with their groceries increased. Next slide, please. I think because we've had so much, you know, our session is already reaching 11 o'clock. I'm, again, just going to let my colleagues look at these. But you can see here, again, before and after in Laurel, when it says P slash P mix, I just want to let you know that that is a combination of paper and plastic. So, you know, some, you know, at some stores, they say, would you like paper or plastic? And so this is basically all of the non-reusable or the single-use bags. And then the after in Laurel really did shift almost all to paper. So this is another model that, you know, with good intent, really ended up just shifting from plastic to paper. And at least plast, I mean, the paper is, you know, more biodegradable, or it is biodegradable, whereas the plastic, I guess technically is biodegradable, but when we're talking, you know, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of years, that's not really very meaningful. So you can see that this really didn't, you know, didn't have the intended impact. Next slide. So this is Baltimore City, and again, they did drastically decrease the number of plastic bags in use, but the paper bags still rather significant. But at least they're, you know, making progress in getting people to not use single, single-use bags at the, you know, at the store. Next slide. Okay, and this is probably getting closer to what's most relevant for our bill, is that they started out with plastic bags, and again, in a mix of plastic, plastic bags and reusable bags, plastic and paper was the vast majority. And then after they implemented, oh, I'm sorry, can you go back one slide? I just want to check on something. Okay, so I want to be just clear about Baltimore. Baltimore had, okay, so these four, excuse me, three chains, Giant, Harris Teeter, and Shoppers really obeyed the intent of the law. Safeway, which is on the next slide, rather than actually eliminating plastic bags altogether, they created plastic bags that they said were not, that were reusable. In reality, they're kind of, they're not bags that most people reuse. So their law had a sort of this requirement that when we're talking about single-use bags, we're talking about bags that of a certain thinness. And once you get above a certain thickness, it falls into the category of reusable. In reality, those bags are not reused. And so this, this is something we want to stay away from, the conversation about how thick or how thin, because you get actors like Safeway, who just moved to a thicker plastic bag to avoid the single use. I don't know if this is, I'm talking really fast. I usually try to go a little slower, but I'm very sensitive of our time here. So they were basically just kind of dodging the intent and almost making it worse by, instead of using, you know, the thin plastic bags, they're using more plastic, which I guess might have the slight advantage of they don't blow around as easily as the thin plastic bags when you're calling those, you know, thicker plastic bags, quote, reusable. But they really did dodge the intent there of the law by, you know, continuing to use plastic bags, but just giving thicker ones. Next slide, please. Okay, so when we're talking about bottom-up, you know, we're talking about learning the lessons of legislation and states that have successfully implemented statewide laws have done exactly what's happening in Maryland right now, that they've had, you know, they've had legislation that happened, you know, sort of one jurisdiction at a time and done research on what's been successful, what's not been successful. The charge, so the charge for other bags is not, it's twofold. It's one, to remind people that there actually is a cost, that really nothing is free, as much as we would like it to be. But more than anything, to remind people that we need you to change your behavior. And that, that even at a 10-cent, a 10-cent cost is significant enough to push people to bring their own, you know, their own reusable bags when they do their grocery shopping. And that's, again, the main intent is behavior change, getting people to get away from the single-use bags. The thickness standard, again, you can see what happened in Baltimore. You have sort of, I don't know if, I'm not necessarily going to call one grocery store a bad actor, but, you know, they're not following the intent of the law when they just, you know, say, oh, we'll go to a certain thickness, and then we're not, we're in compliance, but we're not really meeting the intent of a law. Compostable bags and biodegradable bags unfortunately don't really do what they say unless they have very specific conditions. So exempting compostable and biodegradable bags, as much as it sounds like it might be a solution, we, the, the bag technology is not there yet for it to realistically be compostable and biodegradable in a sort of universal way. And universal participation is that we're not singling out just grocery stores. This applies to all retailers. This applies to restaurants, and it applies to all shoppers. And a concern that often comes up is, well, is this an unfair burden on, you know, people that are already, you know, struggling to pay their grocery bill to begin with? And the answer is, there are, will be lots of opportunities. In fact, I will encourage the county, in fact, I go to events at different departments of the county, and one of the things that is often sort of the swag is a reusable grocery bag. So I know the county already is involved in the reusable grocery bag business, or they're connected with it. And, you know, I think retailers will be willing to get into that, too. And where actually, the law creates a window for retailers to give reusable bags out for free the week or the last nine days of April, which starts on Earth Day, April 22nd, and goes till April 30th. So that is an opportunity to make sure that people who, you know, for whom even a dollar or $2 difference on their grocery bill is, is, you know, something that they really have to budget for to make sure that they have the resources, that they, they're not going to, you know, bear the burden of this law. Next slide, please. These are, again, this is sort of a level of detail that I'm going to allow my colleagues to look at it another time. But, you know, these definitions are very specific to avoid the, you know, sort of the players that'll just do something that really isn't the intent of the law in, with the intent of compliance, but not really meeting the spirit of law. And this is the timeline that's laid out. And there does give like a little bit of implementation period, a little bit of sort of preparation or warning. So, you know, so there's notice to the public that, hey, this is coming into effect starting on, you know, the law, the provisions of the law would in part begin October 1st, but full implementation on November 1st with lots of notice required. So people know that this is coming. Maybe they have a, an opportunity, you know, I don't know how frequently folks go to the grocery store, once a week, more than once a week, but they'll have a month of grocery store trips to say, oh, I got to start remember to bringing my reusable bags. And that month in the meantime, there won't be, the ban will be in effect, but stores will be allowed to distribute paper bags without the charge. And that is the reminder, like, hey, this is happening. We go into full effect November 1st. Next slide. Again, more details, I think. There's some certain exceptions. You know, there are some things, we don't, as a society, have better options for some of these things. Raw meat and seafood, for example, that is the way that, you know, a lot of our health codes really require us to treat those things. So there are certain, certain instances where it is not considered a plastic carryout bag. And you'll see all of these things that, what's my favorite one? "Raw meat or seafood or other foods, the state or consistency of which is not conducive to the use of anything other than plastic carryout bags." So you will not be able to, you will not be required to take home your 20 pounds of ice in a paper bag, for example. We will still allow plastic bags, and those will not be considered plastic carryout bags. You will not have to, you know, if you get your produce, your bulk items, your bulk produce in the store, there will still be plastic bags available. I think ultimately, the goal should be getting rid of all of those things. But until we, as, you know, more collectively as a society have, you know, better options, we're letting people say, okay, we're, we're okay, we're going to, we're going to let this be okay for now, and we'll, you know, we'll take steps, we'll take baby steps towards becoming plastic, plastic-free. And then I think I already mentioned, yes, the free reusable carryout bags are allowed to be given away from April 22nd. Thought that was a nice little nod to Earth Day. And notice, we got the enforcement, partly in the Health Department because they already spend time in restaurants for other code issues, and inspections and permits is going to take up the other retailers. Next slide. And you can see from the data that, you know, Sierra Club has collected for us that really it does change. People can change their behavior, and it, it's hard. You know, I'm sure I will be, I will be the one who goes to the grocery store for, you know, probably several weeks in a row before I remember that, oh, my goodness, I'm the one who wrote this law or worked to write this law, and I still forgot to bring my reusable bags. On that note, I also want to give a big shout out to former Councilwoman Sarah Lacy, who did a lot of the legwork on this bill. We had hoped to introduce it last session, but that didn't happen. And of course, Kelly Kenny, who is here and helped us work out a lot of the fine details. And, and of course, the Sierra Club, whose support and data has been instrumental. Thank you.
Looks like there were a lot of pieces of legislation that were queued up from last session. Any additional, Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not much to add. I thank the Councilwoman for that very thorough presentation. I think you heard her articulate that there are a number of different approaches, different jurisdictions have taken. It's a, it's a choice for this council which one we choose, but I can pledge to you that the county executive cares very deeply about getting plastic out of our ecosystem and fully supports this approach. So with that, I will just note that I have added a reusable bag to my car. I have yet to recall, remember to bring it in with me to the grocery store.
Ms. Homer?
Yes, I want to thank Councilwoman Robyn for bringing this forward. This is a big issue. We're, we're, I won't say we're behind, but we are not the first doing this. And so it's good for us to get on board with this. The one thing that I would say, while I totally appreciate the symbolism of Earth Day, I would hate to limit any business from giving out reusable bags at any time. If they want to have that as a possibility to reduce the number, I would like for that to be available for any retail establishment at any time is to put forth, give out reusable bags if they want, if they want to do that. So that would be my only suggestion for the bill.
Chairman Smith, may I respond to that? I, overall, agree in spirit. What we don't want to do is create the unintended consequence of people saying, oh, well, I'll just get more free usable bags when I get, free reusable bags when I go to the store. So that 10-cent price floor is still in effect for the reusable bags. But I definitely hear your, your desire. And I can't remember, this was something we had debated. I need to go back and make sure I know where we landed on some of these pieces. But I believe that is also allowed in that first month window. Is that correct, Ms. Kenny?
Ms. Kenny?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in Section 2 of the bill.
Okay, so that's, we do have that opening window, too, when the bill first, when those provisions first go into effect. So that first month, that October, at least as the timeline stands, October 2023, will be a period where retailers can provide reusable bags for no charge.
Okay, oh, so I just want to clarify. So they can offer them at other times, they would just have to give the charge, make the charge for them?
Yes.
It's just for free during that time?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes. And remember, nothing is really ever free. Even those we're paying for.
Ms. Picker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank the sponsor for working hard in the last session and bringing this forward at this time. The previous council worked really hard on litter issues, even going to get enabling legislation, Mr. Volkey from the state, to allow, yeah, I speak in many schools, and litter is on the minds of our young people. And as you note, of late, there's been, I'm sure in every district, a lot of complaints of plastic bags and litter on our roadways and our ramps, which are often state roads. And I'm grateful for our new governor, who just increased litter pickup to the tune of $30 million. Those are count, those are state tax dollars. So we need, as a people, as a county, as a citizenry, we need to tackle litter, and this plastic bag issue is, is one stop along, along that road. So I look forward to sponsoring this and working out any details. I'm comfortable with the, where the bill has landed. I really appreciate the presentation and the hard work of the sponsor. I just put my name on as a co-sponsor, so I feel like I'm getting all the, getting all the love without doing the work. So thank you so much, Ms. Rodvian.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I just wanted to ask the sponsor a question. I appreciate the presentation that you did so much. I know you were trying to talk quickly through it for the sake of everyone's time. I just want to make sure I go home with the correct understanding of something that you said in my head. So you had mentioned that the prices for the plastic bags are already built into, like, the, essentially the price point of the groceries in the grocery store? And so, is that correct? Did I understand that?
That is correct.
Okay. Which then, so then, this legislation would require the charge for the plastic bag, and you would, I would assume, see it as a?
Yes, it will be shown on the receipt.
An itemized receipt?
Yes.
Is there any, I guess, my question is, is, is there any reason to believe that the grocery stores will take that charge that is already built in? Will that go away? Do we have any reason to believe that will go away, or are they just going to add the extra charge on top of that price that they already have built into their price point? I know in the grocery, the street margins are very, very tight. And so the concern I have is that it isn't going to turn out to be, we're itemizing it, and so this other charge goes away, but instead, consumers will be paying now both.
Yeah, I, I mean, that is a market-based question. So I think, you know, like you said, because margins are very tight, and competition amongst grocery stores is indeed, you know, present. So I would imagine that they would, and actually, one piece of evidence to support the idea that they would bring it down is those grocery stores that currently do not provide single-use bags are also some of the same grocery stores that have, you know, that have lower prices and are known for lower prices. I think it's Aldi and, oh, Shoppers. Was it Shoppers? No.
Lidl.
Lidl. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, it's very helpful.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no, I just, I'm sorry, I'm very excited. So I wanted to share one little fun fact. After Baltimore City did their plastic bag ban, Mr. Trashwheel noticed a significant reduction in plastic bags in Baltimore Harbor. So if you're, hopefully everyone here is familiar with Mr. Trashwheel. And Mr. Trashwheel is, I guess, hungry, but hungry in a way that we should all be happy about.
Please follow him on Twitter.
Mr. Volkey?
I was just going to make that point. I think one of the interesting things from your presentation is the places that are the lower cost, if you will, food markets, grocery stores, whatever you want to call them, a lot of them don't have the bags. And so they have, as a market advantage, passed the cost on, or the savings on to the consumer, and said, if you want to come in here with your own bag, it's like you go to Aldi, they charge you the 25 cents for the cart. I think that's to keep you from running off with the cart, you know, it incentivizes you to bring it back, right? And it also saves them from having to put somebody in the parking lot to go collect all these things again, because you want your quarter back. But, so I look at it, and while I certainly understand why this has been put in, I also think the market has found that there is efficiency, and there is savings that can be passed on to the consumer. And I don't know that this bill is going to force that to the point that was being made, that the stores are going to have to pass it on. But as a competitive advantage, some of these stores already are passing it on and doing it. You know, my wife has like five of these reusable bags in the back of her car, and she uses them all the time. She's way better than I am at it. Yeah, exactly. But I think that's like, it's a generational change, too, is the other thing. My dad, he's never going to use reusable bags. Like, he'll pay the 10 cents all day, every day, because it's just a mindset issue that people of our generation and younger are looking at it going, hey, I just read this article about like the floating continents of trash that are plastic in the oceans, and that disturbs people who are younger. So I don't mean to sound ageist, and maybe I'll get in trouble with the commission on this, who knows. But I'm just making the point that I think this bill, while well-intentioned, I'm not sure this is going to have 100% the desired impact, just because there are factors at play that are bigger than anything that we can do about some of these things. You know, so I share that thought, because I don't necessarily want to put another burden on people who are currently feeling stretched in this inflation-filled market, to say to them, hey, this is an additional cost. And I hear you, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and try to mischaracterize it as a tax, right? I understand it. But it is a fee. It's certainly a fee that is going to be imposed on people. And we can debate what a tax and a fee is, and all those things. I think the challenge is, is this the right time to be doing that? Is this going to completely change the behavior? And I think some of the other jurisdictions, because I was looking at your slides, and I'll look at them in more depth later, show that the results at points are good, and at other points, they're mixed. And so I think we just need to consider all of that. But those are all the things that are in my mind going through this. So thank you for bringing it, and I appreciate the conversation.
Could I respond briefly?
This is sponsored by you?
Yeah, so I definitely thank you for those comments. You know, I, this bill was, I don't see this as the end. I think at some point, we need to also ban paper bags, but we need to also allow people periods of transition. And, you know, when we can move forward, in fact, Mr. Michelson and I have talked about this, you know, this, this bill, you know, had, had been in the, in the, in progress for a good period of time. And we know that there are things that, you know, down the road, that we want to do to make the, you know, to make the circumstances even better. I mean, there are certainly downsides of using paper bags as well. But I think we have to push forward, we have to do something. Because, you know, if we continue using it, the plastic at the rate we're using, I mean, not only just, you know, pulling more carbon out of, you know, because they're, they're carbon-based, you know, we can't be continuing to use carbon. Like you said, the, the islands in the ocean that are not beautiful tropical islands, but plastic islands, you know, I find are alarming. And, you know, we, they impact us in lots of negative ways, as we have, you know, I hear stories from boat users who, these plastic bags get stuck in their propellers, and they, you know, gum up the works. They're obviously not good for wildlife. So it's really, it, we won't change everyone. I think you're absolutely right. But if we can change a lot of folks, and I think we will, because I think, you know, as a county and as a state, we really do have, you know, a mindset of like, hey, we need to take care of our natural resources. So I see this as a first step that eventually will be pushing in other directions. You know, obviously, this tackles those bags. Does it tackle, you know, my Snapple bottles, or my, you know, all of this other reusable, exactly, like, so many other reusable plastics that we are going to have to tackle. But we've got to start somewhere, and so this is a start.
I just want to point out, Mr. Volkey held up a certain cup that a few years ago was styrofoam.
I remember, man. I have to go to other places to get it still.
To get your styrofoam?
Yeah.
Ms. Picker?
I was just gonna have some fun with Mr. Volkey, and his dad, his dad might not bring a reusable bag, but he's not going out of the grocery store with a plastic bag. It's at least paper, which decomposes better.
After this bill.
After this bill, after you vote for this bill to move the citizenry along in our thinking about the environment and litter and our carbon footprint.
What's he going to use? You know, the concern that I have heard from some people, including my dad, is he saves all these bags, because he uses them for cat litter, because they have three cats. I'm dead serious when I tell you this. They keep a whole pile of them, and they use it. And so, you know, now I guess we're going to substitute that, right? Because people are not going to stop using plastic bags for that. So now, all of a sudden, Amazon is going to be the go-to place for these disposable bags. So instead of using, reusing, I should say, the plastic bags that are already in existence for this, we'll just kind of get them a different way. So that's my point about, I understand where you're going, and I appreciate it. I just think there's a lot to this that I'm considering. Like, where these bags for cat litter are going to come from.
Yeah, well, as, as an owner of two cats, I am, you know, I'm very familiar. I regularly save all of my grocery bags to use for cat litter. But I will say, you know, if I have to turn and, you know, purchase those cat litter bags myself, at least that we are, we are, we are narrowing down the, the plastic bag issue to perhaps cat owners. I never use as many plastic bags for cat cleanup that, than I get from the grocery store. So I'm always, and just as an FYI, if you do have plastic bags and you collect them in your house, you can take them to the recycling center. They're, right on, right on. You can take them to the recycling center in Odenton, which I am so grateful, or it might be Gambles, I'm always, that, what is it?
There's one Glenn Burney, there's one Glenn Burney, too.
So you can take them there. It's, it's a pain, you know, I collect them and then take them once a month. But they're, they're actually, the recycling there is pretty clean, unlike the stores at the grocery store where there is a lot of contamination. But, you know, if we, plus, a, a plastic bag with cat waste in it is not likely to blow away and end up in our waterways. So, you know, if we can kind of limit the use, we're, we're making progress. And again, this is not perfect. But, you know, stepping forward.
Ms. Hammer?
I do want to share, so one thing that's exempted in this bill is the plastic bags that go over your newspaper, and those are perfect for cat litter. As an owner of three cats, that's what we use, is the sleeve from the newspaper. So you can encourage your father to do that.
I like that.
So we can...
Supporting local journalism.
Right, and supporting, supporting local journalism. So there, there you have it.
It's like a win-win-win, man.
But also recycle your newspaper, which is recyclable in the stream.
So I, this is slightly tangential, but because Ms. Rodvian brought up the DPW issue of recycling plastic bags, I just want to make a statement about this, this sort of personal privilege. I was at the Northern Recycling Center, because I do take my bags up there about same as you, once a month. I take those Amazon bags that you get everything in. I take the plastic bags, I do all that, believe it or not, you might not. But my complaint is this, there's two tiny little trashcans there to put them in. I mean, they're, they're big, but for all the people in this county, we need to do better than that, right? We need to encourage more in terms of ability to recycle. I also think the fact that we have to go all the way to the Northern Center, and the only way to do it is to go all the way up to the top, talk to the people up there, and then drive around, it discourages people from doing this. We need to make this more accessible, where people have an easier way to dump these things, even if it's just, you can roll right in front of the dump, or it's on the road coming in. I saw that, and I thought to myself, this could be better. So just a...
I will totally co-sponsor that bill with you, Mr. Volkey.
I don't think it's a bill.
We can talk to DPW.
Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no more lights on 1923. We'll now change the conversation to Resolution
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are Administration Resolutions 323 and 423 of the same panel, Mr. Daniels and Ms. Nederer. Both are surplus. The first step in the surplus property process, both are in Councilwoman Hammer's district. 323 declares a .25 acre county-owned property located at the corner of Yellow Springs South and Wy Mills South in Laurel, Maryland as surplus. Property is currently designated as a well site. Real estate has canvassed county agencies and determined no county need for the property. This, as I mentioned, is the first step. If the council adopts this resolution, the county will move forward. With the disposition process for the property in question, a subsequent ordinance approving the disposition will have to come back before this body. Happy to answer any questions about this one.
I'll just say, these are both small properties in my district that, that there's no issue with them being surplus. They're, they're pretty tiny. Will be interesting to see what interest there is in them, because they're just little, little corner parcels right
Seeing no more lights, Ms. Rodvian?
I just wanted to say thank you to the panelists for, you know, sitting here and being ready to take our questions, which apparently we really don't have any. But thank you, because your time is valuable. So it's, I just want to make sure you're appreciated for being here.
Definitely. You know, what's interesting is, it's always the bill that you think there's no questions on, that winds up being 1,000 questions. So I definitely appreciate the administration being prepared. The military call it BPT, be prepared to, right? And so thank you for indulging us and being there for us. So, all right. So no questions on 323, Resolution 423?
Ditto to everything I said for 323, except that this is a .1637 acre county-owned parcel along Eagle Harbor South in Laurel, Maryland.
How big is one, is that like a flower pot?
No, it's a tenth of an acre, so...
They, they used to be like sump stations, and it has a little tiny building there that covered the...
Big enough to build an ADU?
Probably.
That's just a joke. That's a joke. Any questions on 423? Resolution. All right. Singna, thank you all for, for discussing Resolution 423. Just for sort of public interest, we have been working on some rules, engagement with the, the team, the council members up here. And so in the coming weeks, maybe certainly next month, you'll have us deep dive into that, probably in the, the next work session, to discuss a lot of those rules changes that we're potentially going to be proposing. So just for the general public's review, I know there were people who had provided in public testimony in our council meetings about this, but this will be coming out here in the next month or so. No, not necessarily the resolutions, but sort of the outcomes and things like that of, like, we'll start disclosing kind of what those...
Well, that might be...
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Our team found that to be new information.
Oh, you did?
That's what, man, you're the boss.
No, just giving them, yeah, BPT, right? Other than that, any other questions from the councils?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, county council is adjourned at 7:00 PM on March 20th, 2023, for our regular legislative session.